UBSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies, and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumuslake self-storage.com.
Approach the podium, address the council, and please speak clearly and state your name for the record. Please note, in accordance with state law, the city council is not permitted to undertake any action on an item not appearing on the posted agenda. Thank you.
And Madam Clerk, the item on the agenda says "Public comment items not listed on the agenda." I'm going to defer that until we get to the consent calendar, and we will move to presentations. Did you take the presentation from me? You did. Mr. Rick Lim. Test. This, I've read this proclamation twice. It has been put together with a lot of love and affection. It's a proclamation honoring Marysville Police Department volunteer Rick Lim for his dedicated service to the citizens of Marysville. Whereas, Rick Lim began his exemplary journey of volunteer service with the Marysville Police Department in 2002, 22 years ago, demonstrating steadfast dedication and a passion for serving his community. And whereas, throughout his tenure as a valued volunteer, Rick Lim has generously devoted countless hours to a wide range of responsibilities, including assisting officers on patrol, participating in a vital range training program, maintaining critical equipment, supporting special events, and acting as a trusted resource to provide information and guidance to the community. And whereas, Rick Lim has consistently exhibited an unwavering commitment to the well-being of the Marysville community, selflessly giving his time, energy, and expertise to enhance public safety and improve the quality of life for all residents. And whereas, through his remarkable efforts, Rick Lim has achieved the extraordinary milestone of contributing over 10,000 volunteer hours to the Marysville Police Department, an accomplishment that reflects his exceptional dedication and enduring spirit of service. And I'd like a quick side here. There are multiple books, and particularly one about if you want to become an absolute expert in a field, you need to dedicate 10,000 hours. You've done it. And whereas, the Marysville Police Department and the City of Marysville are profoundly grateful for Rick Lim's invaluable contributions, his tireless work ethic, and his steadfast devotion to making our city a safer, stronger, and more connected community. Now therefore, be it resolved that I, Mayor Chris Branscombe, together with the City Council of the City of Marysville, do hereby recognize and extend our deepest appreciation to Rick Lim for his extraordinary service, his selfless dedication, and his unwavering commitment to the City of Marysville and its citizens. In witness whereof, we extend our heartfelt gratitude and offer this proclamation in acknowledgement of his exemplary volunteerism and the lasting impact he has made on our community. And I very proudly added my signature to this proclamation along with Chief Sack's signature in our city contesting this proclamation. Rick, 10,000 hours. God bless you. Have any comments you'd like to share?
Not really.
After 10,000 hours, who needs to say more, right?
Bravo!
Put me in a great mood. I needed that. And now we have another very important event. The presentation is Police Officer Oath of Office, Kelsey Beck, presented by the city clerk. And I imagine the chief, you want to, do you want to join?
Ready? Please raise your right hand. Do you, Kelsey Beck, solemnly swear that you will support the Constitution of the United States of America and the Constitution of the State of California against all enemies, foreign and domestic, that you will bear true faith and allegiance to the Constitution of the State of California and the Constitution of the United States of America, and that you will take this obligation freely without any mental reservation or purpose of evasion, and that you will well and faithfully discharge the duties upon which you are about to enter. Please welcome the lady.
Where's the badge?
So I've got the pleasure of introducing Kelsey Beck for a second time. So, Kelsey Beck, born and raised UBS City, California. Graduated UBS City High School in 2022. Prior to graduating high school, we hired her on as a cadet with our cadet program where she worked there with us for a couple of years, doing undercover operations at all of our tobacco retail stores and our alcohol establishments, and just did a phenomenal work for the department out there doing that. We've had a lot of many, many, many conversations over the last year about her attending the police academy. The department, the city sponsored her through the police academy, which started in July. We assigned a couple mentors to her, Sergeant Mark Carroll and Reserve Sergeant Ashley Gazzar, that helped her all the way through to the end. And she was able to, well, obviously, she successfully graduated, but she graduated on her 21st birthday, which was December 6th. So we were all there for her graduation and
Happy birthday!
Surprise, yeah. And surprised us while we were there, but no surprise. She was also honored by receiving the Lance Utterback Memorial Scholarship for Leadership. And in addition to that, she was presented the leadership guide on from her graduating police academy class. So we are super proud to have her with us, super proud to see you on this journey for the next many, 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 many years.
That's right.
So I'd like to welcome her mom, Tammy, up here to be able to pin her badge.
Kelsey, how's that feel? All right. Good for you. Oh, how grand. Oh, boy. There's something not on the agenda, but I'm going to call it up now. Mr. City Attorney, do you have anything to report from closed session?
I do. From closed session, by a 4-0 vote, Mr. Gilchrist being absent, the city resolved a personnel issue.
Thank you. We have a brave city attorney here today. He's keeping his distance. He's not feeling well, but he's, he's doing a duty that's required. You can probably go home now. Okay, now, Madam Clerk, do we have any members of the public who would like to comment on items not on the agenda or on the consent calendar?
Not at this time, Mayor.
Thank you, ma'am. We will now move to the consent agenda, and these matters. Thank you for being here, Police Department.
Mayor, we do have some changes to the agenda I need to announce.
If any of y'all wanted to leave now, you could. I know she wants to be with her crew. Bless y'all for being here. Thank you. What a great event. I love that. As you were saying, Madam Clerk, Chief, by the way, and by the way, Chief, that is a wonderful ceremony. That's, that's a wonderful, beautiful ceremony, and I enjoy it every time I see it.
She's got a big support network behind her. The gentleman in the second row was Mr. Dave Gordon. If you remember, the two CHP officers that were taken out by the DUI driver at Loma Crossing several years ago, and made a huge comeback from recovery. Shouldn't be here with us today. And that's him right there, a big, strong part of her family and why she wants to be doing what she's doing. So, yeah, he's a trooper, and he, he's made it through a lot, and standing here today to support her all the way through it. So pretty awesome.
Ceremonies like this have real value. They mean a lot to me, and it was, I just love watching that. Thank you. Madam Clerk?
It's you. So Mayor, there are some changes to the agenda. Item number six on the consent calendar has an error regarding the contract amount. That number-
Regarding the what?
The contract amount. It is currently written at 270,000 plus tax. It should be 202,000 plus tax.
Okay. 202?
And the city manager can answer any further questions about that item if you have.
That's fine. That's it. You just got the right number.
To be more precise, it's 202,015 dollars.
No more rounding. Okay. And again, all matters on the consent agenda are considered routine, therefore approved by one motion unless a council member or our city manager. First request that a matter be removed from the consent agenda for separate discussion and action. What is the will of the council?
We, I would like to remove item nine.
Item nine?
Yeah.
Remove and consider later?
Consider at another meeting.
Okay, with no objection, removed and considered at another meeting. With that amendment, what is the will of the council?
With that amendment, I move to approve.
We have a motion?
I'll second it.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
That is unanimous, Madam Clerk. Okay, we move to the discussion and action calendar, and each of these matters will be discussed separately and acted on separately. The first, the only matter in the discussion and action calendar, item number 10 on the agenda, Commission Committee and Board Appointments. Staff recommends the city council, one, acknowledge and support the appointments made by the mayor to standing committees and community committees. I'm going to interrupt myself here. There was one quick change after the last time I chatted with you, Margie. Did you hear about that? Which one was that, Bruce, the ch- Speak up. Turn your-
Rec Development.
Bruce wants to do rec, fly solo on rec development.
Okay, so you were going to remove me and put-
And since Bruce is a convincing man, I said, whatever you want, Bruce. Is that okay with you, Margie?
No. So the rec development, or department development, is that what you're talking about? Which one are you talking about?
There's two that are similar. One's rec development, one's parks and rec.
Right.
I'm talking about the rec development. And I believe that you are on the parks and rec, correct?
No. It's Gilchrist and Buttercavoli on the parks and rec, and I'm on, with you on the recreation department development.
Yeah, it should be the other way.
So move-
She should be on the, with Stuart on the rec, parks and rec.
Okay, so move me up.
Yeah.
Thank you.
You okay with that?
Yes, I'm fine.
And that's the way it's going to be. Do you have that in your records, Madam Clerk? Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, I'll start again. Recommends, acknowledge and support the appointments made by the mayor, as we just discussed. Point new members to the planning and historical preservation committee, an elected member to fill the single remaining seat on the levy commission, oh, from the interested candidates, Pat Ajuria and Mary Jones. And that is something that is very, this, this is a matter which is purely political in nature and not in a negative way. It's just something that has to be decided.
So if I may, Mayor?
I haven't finished.
My apologies. I'll wait till you finish.
Thank you, sir. This is a matter that's considered in a public meeting, and it's up for discussion as between and debate or consideration amongst the four of us. I have a person in mind, but I'd be interested to hear others first.
So I'm not commenting on that, per se. I was just going to see if we could consider another ad hoc committee for Public Safety Dispatch between, with myself and, if Vice Mayor Buttercavoli is available, to be able to get together and have an ad hoc on the potential consolidation of dispatch between two counties. Does that make sense?
Jim, do you have any thoughts on that?
I think it's timely to start bringing in some of our council members into that discussion because the discussion among staff and administrators is to the point where I think there needs to be some information.
That we shall have an ad hoc committee on, and how would you describe it?
It's a PSAB ad hoc committee, Public Dispatch.
Public ad hoc committee on Public Dispatch, or Safety Dispatch.
Thank you. That'd be more appropriate.
And that committee shall be consisted of the Vice Mayor herself?
If Vice Mayor is willing.
That was your suggestion?
Yes.
Have you discussed this before?
I haven't.
Okay.
No, let me.
Okay, then we'll put that on the board, along with the others.
Thank you.
Thank you. Now, we'll move to the last item, which is, Jim, would you describe how we ended up being in a position of choosing between two people for the levy commission seat?
My understanding is that we had one person that applied or turned in papers? Sure, if you would like to, Madam Clerk.
So how it happened originally is there are three seats on the levy commission. When it was time to pull papers for getting back on and getting back reelected-
Pardon me. When you, when you say pull papers, you should define that. File papers for election.
Correct. File papers for election. Only two individuals filed papers. Those two individuals were John Nicoletti and Ben Deal. At that time, nobody else had pulled papers, therefore they were immediately selected as two of the three members. Then the other two members currently that wanted to continue their time on the levy commission ended up having to fight for one seat, essentially.
Well, yeah, and I presume there is precedent or authority allowing us to make a decision-
Correct.
Between two who had failed to file for election.
Correct.
And I presume that was oversight or forgetfulness or what have you.
Correct.
And they both have served on the levy commission before.
They are currently serving until their term ends this month.
Okay. And, but we have authority is-
Correct. I did speak with-
Within the authority of the council to make a decision between the two.
Absolutely.
And we can only choose one of the two.
Correct. Correct. Typically, that decision would land on UBS County to make the decision of who fills that seat. The only way that that would happen is if there was one person interested in one available seat, or two interested in two available seats. They are not allowed to select two individuals that want one seat. That decision has to come from council.
You know, I thought the county would be strong enough to do something like that. But it's been left to us. And, and, well, it's, it's part of the job. Mr. Vice Mayor?
I just have a question. Obviously, these two, both must have been spoken with, correct? Because they both were previous, or they're both currently, right?
Correct.
And you've spoken with both of them?
Yes, and they both did submit letters of intent to want to be considered for the position, and they are leaving it up to fate of the council.
Last, just lastly, did either one of them give a reason why they didn't run for the seat?
From what I understood, it was-
Did I see those letters?
Forgetfulness. Yes, Mayor, they are in your binder.
I'll take those that way.
It just so happened that the time had passed, the time and the deadline to file had actually passed before they realized that there was a deadline.
So they both would have, who's? Oh. So they both intended to run?
That is what I understood, yes.
Okay, thank you.
I'll read Mary Jones's letter first for the record. Well, she's addressed it to the Board of Supervisors, but here it is with us. And she states, "I would like to express my interest in filling a seat on the Marysville Levy Commission. I've been on the commission since 2020 and would love to continue in that role. I not only work in Marysville, but I'm also a long-term resident and have lived in East Marysville for over 40 years. I belong to the local colonists club and have a deep commitment to my community. Thank you for your time and consideration. Regards," and it signs, Mary Jones. This from Patrick Ajuria. "My name is Patrick Ajuria, and I would like to apply for the open position on the Marysville Levy Commission. Through my own oversight, I missed the deadline for the election. I have over 40 years' experience on the levy, of the levy system. Fifteen years as a part-time worker and 27 years on the board. The last 12 years as board president. I would like to see the levy construction project completed. Your consideration is appreciated," and it signs, Patrick Ajuria.
One more question?
Sure.
One more question. Did, I'm assuming that we approached these two?
In-
When, when we knew there was an open seat, we approached these two?
Correct.
Did we approach anyone else?
No, because there was only one seat, and we, they actually have a new member that is currently on the seat. that is currently on the seat, Ben Deal, and John Nicoletti pulled and filed his paperwork on time, and Ben as well. So we did inform them in the last levy commission meeting that they will both be looking to fill one seat.
Oh, I understand that, but we didn't approach anyone else to consider?
Correct.
Councilmember Rollins, what are your thoughts?
My thoughts are, at least they both have experience, I like that. I don't have anybody to recommend at this time, if that's what you're asking.
Thank you.
Mr. Hudson?
So I know both of these members, and they're both dedicated individuals to the city of Marysville. I know Patrick Ageria very well, as he was my captain for several years in the fire department, and I was with the department back in 97, when we had our gates closed, and Patrick Ageria was here. He's been part of that system of the levies for his family, he's been here forever, and I know Mary's been here for a long time too, but I would put a motion towards Patrick Ageria.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
I'm curious first, is it a four-year term, or a two-year?
It is a four-year term.
A four-year?
And unfortunately, they are not staggered, and so everybody gets reelected on the fourth. And so that is something that the council may want to consider later time, to stagger those, the levy commission, consider it.
I actually am stumped on this one. They're both qualified, they both have experience. I'm a little concerned that neither one of them applied, pulled papers after wanting to be it now, but I'm going to honestly say, I do not, I'm at a coin flip right now, to be honest with you.
Thank you. I am only acquainted with one of the two applicants, and that is Patrick Ageria. In looking at the experience, Patrick clearly has more experience with the levy system, and just on experience alone. It's not on the fact that I'm acquainted with him, though my acquaintance creates a strong impression, I just don't know Ms. Jones, and even though she has experience, it really doesn't compare to Mr. Ageria's. So I would be in favor, along with you, with Patrick Ageria. It would help to have a third vote, or two votes against, so we know where we stand. Well, I will second the motion.
I think Bruce. Derek's second.
Yep, thank you, thank you very much. I will second the motion, and you can comment if you wish.
I agree with Patrick. I've known Pat for many years, myself, and I also enjoy that he says that he would, you know, he wants to see the levy work completed. I always liked that, that's always been me, a real positive thing about the community.
Okay, so we have a motion, a second, all in favor of Patrick Ageria. Let's do a roll call vote.
Councilmember Rollins?
Yes.
Councilmember Gilchrist? Councilmember Hudson?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Buttercavoli?
Yes.
And Mayor Branscombe?
Yes, ma'am, thank you.
Okay, that matter is concluded. I think, I think we did that appropriately, and it's no negative reflection on Ms. Jones. She obviously is interested in the community, and a valuable member of our community, and maybe we can find something else for her to do.
Question on this, I'm not sure where you're going to go, and I may be premature here, but do, where do we stand with planning commissioners? I know Margie's going to be picking a new one, when do we need to approve those?
That is on this discussion item as well, so after the levy commission, now it is the planning commission. In your binder, on item 10, there is the planning commission, and the ones that are highlighted are our names and members that need to either be reelected, or new names to be selected.
I will go down my list. As mayor, this was something I was unaware of before I got elected. It looks like you got more power, it's just one more decision you have to make. But I have been fortunate to have secured the services of Stephen Mesher, I know that he'll be moving out of town. He lives in town now. I have, through Ellen in, on our city staff, that's the word, asking him to stay until next month, isn't it next month, City Manager, when we present the general plan update?
That's when we anticipate doing it, yes.
So I've asked him to stay through that, and that gives me some time to find someone else. It's hard to find people who, because it's a real, it's real work, y'all know. The, and Mary Langsdorf has committed to continuing. I haven't spoken to Mr. Krieger yet, but I, again, have passed word, asking him to stay through the presentation. But I think if I were them, I'd want to stay through the presentation of something they've been so involved in. And, so I will be looking, and in fact, I'm in process on looking for one resident member, and then I can have an at-large member who's not, thank you for being here, sir, good to see you. Who need not be a resident of the city, they have to be a resident of the county. Oh, no, hold it, he can be a resident of Sutter County also. There's a, at-large, but it's, there's a circumference, and I forget what it is, but Sutter County and Yuba County fit within that at-large, and Mr. Krieger is a resident of Sutter County, as is Mary Langsdorf. Mary works for, she's a senior executive with Frank M. Booth, as such a very valuable member of the commission. And Mr. Krieger, I had asked the chief executive at the Benes Wright Out Hospital to name a candidate who has keen understanding of the work he was in the hospital, or is closely associated with it, and he'd suggested Mr. Krieger, based on his experience and activity with the Blue Zone. Those are up in the air. I don't think we have Stuart here, so the new member from Stuart is up in the air. Mr. Hudson, has Ben Deal staying with the?
So it's a fair question. Last time I had a conversation with him, he was interested in staying in the position, but I'm curious, Madam Clerk, is there a conflict in terms, being Mr. Deal is also now on the commission, the levy commission, I believe he can still participate on the planning commission as well, but I'm not quite sure if there's something written.
So I would have to check into that, I believe it would be okay, two different commissions, but I will check in on that.
You cannot be on two elected positions, only in one elected position.
Thank you, Mayor, I just wanted to make sure that there wasn't going to be a conflict from the city side, and, but yeah, please get back to me on that.
We can concur with our city attorney.
Yes.
It may be that it's just situational conflicts that may arise, which I find wouldn't be very likely between those two organizations.
And, and, Marjorie, you may name one, and by the way, if you come up with another name, if you find another candidate, let me know.
Well, we spoke about one.
I remember.
But, yeah, so I'll keep you contacted for me.
And do you have someone else?
Yes, I'm appointing Valerie Long Sutton to the planning commission, you know, Valerie would be.
Valerie, Valerie Long Sutton.
Gotcha.
Oh my goodness sakes, how is the city going to manage this? That's great. Bravo, bravo, bravo.
Valerie will be a valuable addition to the planning commission.
I couldn't be happier.
Especially with her longstanding commitment to the city of Marysville, and she attends many city council meetings. I have given Valerie a copy of the general plan, and blustered with it, because that's going to be one of her first meetings. I remember vividly that my second meeting on the planning commission was the introduction to the general plan, so it's, it's very, very important, and she'll do well in those responsibilities. Congratulations, Valerie.
Absolutely.
Thank you for accepting my appointment.
Let it be written, let it be done. Very cool, okay. So, we know the status, oh, Mr. Vice Mayor, let's see where you stand. Ben is staying on the, Ben is staying? So you have on record everything we've covered here? Let me see how that comports with the, with the matter here. Members planning, okay. Planning, and a committee, all have been done, I don't think we need a.
I just wanted to ask the clerk, so from a logistics standpoint, our next council meeting is the first week of January. That's ringing. And the first planning commission meeting is scheduled to be when?
So the first regular council meeting is not until January 21st, and that is because the 7th is recessed.
We recessed that one.
Correct, but the levy commission meeting will be before the 21st.
Not too worried about the levy commission, because we cited that, but the planning commission.
The planning commission, that isn't on the calendar at the moment with their clerk, but it is supposed to be in January, and I assume, okay, so it would be four days after ours.
Planning commission, four days after council.
Correct.
But we just want to have a full.
And, yeah, Mr. City Attorney, Assistant City Manager, and the way we have special meetings, we'll be able to fit all kinds of.
We may have another one, yeah.
Okay, back to the agenda, I apologize. And let's, just for completeness sake, everything we've just done in this, we, some of it is discretionary, but let's bless it all with an overall motion, what's the will of the council, I'm going to get a motion approving the action on item number 10.
I make a motion, move to approve as discussed.
Thank you.
I'll second.
I'm second, and all in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. Council comments, anybody have a comment, anything they want to share?
I'd just like to say happy holidays to everyone, and I'm excited to start the new year as a council member, and I don't have any committee reports, as I was disassigned, as you should see. So thank you so much, and have a great new year, if I don't see you prior to that.
So I just want to thank the staff, Robin, welcome, appreciate it, and Nadine, thank you for your work, and Jim, Chief, Enzo, you guys have been working your tails off, and 2024 has been a hell of a year. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for the changes, and the stuff that we've gotten through, and I am super stoked, the hotel is going down, and I just thank you for all you guys' work, and everything to do with that. I did not want to leave that unsaid. Thank you, guys. Thank you, Jim, thank you, everybody. So, Merry Christmas, Bah Humbug, whichever way you want to look at it. I will see you guys next year, hopefully, probably not, probably before.
Mr. Vice Mayor?
No committee reports, but it is nice to see the new faces that we have working with us, and new council member. I want to thank the mayor for being forgetful, and made it where I could do the tree lighting, because he was a little forgetful. And it was, the tree lighting, the whole event, and I'm not sure what they called the whole event, to be honest with you, but man, it was impressive. I mean, it was like a Hallmark movie and a Hallmark card, it really was, so it was a lot of fun. And the parade was every bit as fun. And, were you the one leading the parade? Because the pace was perfect. Instead of doing the thing in 15 minutes, we did it in 18 minutes. But it was nice, I don't remember who was in front, but it was slowed down enough that we could kind of interact with the people, so that was fun. But anyway, it was a great time, and happy holidays to everybody, because I guess we won't be back till January, well.
We'll probably be back this week.
No, we'll be back Thursday, but after Thursday, so.
I deserve no credit for, for that event. I was so tired that day, I got done with the domino game in the afternoon, I went home and I thought I was free. And Carrie Haku organizes the tree lighting, my phone rings, I see Carrie. Hi, Carrie, what's doing? She says, well, you on your way? I had no idea what she was talking about, I'd totally forgotten about it, and then when she reminded me, I turned all kinds of shades of red, I was so embarrassed, I said, please tell me Bruce is there. He'll do a better job than I could do anyway, and I heard nothing but great things. The Christmas parade, I always feel awkward being honored riding in the Christmas parade, usually Stuart rides with me, but I didn't see him, he was in there somewhere. And so I'm riding in my car all by myself, and I'm feeling foolish, and why the big deal about me, right? But, the kids, you look out at the parade, and you're going by the kids, and the grownups around the kids get excited because the kids are excited, so I'm waving at the kids and interacting with them both sides, and it is one of the grandest feelings, the smile that just won't go away. And Chief, whoever was leading it, it was absolutely a perfect pace. And then I finish, pardon me, this is going to take a minute, I finished, I finish, and I finish wherever, wherever the parking lot is, I forget which direction. I finished the parade, and I parked my car in the parking lot, and I'm taking all the decor off of it. And then I see a guy coming by, Coolidge for Assembly, and it turns out, his father was my step cousin, if there is such a thing. His, his father and my father were stepbrothers to a second marriage of their parents, how it goes, anyway. So I go, and I see it, and I said, well, who's Coolidge? And he comes over, and I walk up to him, and I said, I knew your daddy when he was in high school. His dad was a very well-known and prominent attorney in this area, sadly, he was killed in a fire several, you know, in the foothills. And met him, and then shortly after that, I see the chief come by with the entire police department. And it was absolutely a beautiful thing, they had some gear out in front, and it must have been the whole crew, as much of the crew as I could ever imagine, and it was a beautiful thing, and Autumn, I always forget Autumn's last name, Officer Rosenfeld had her young child with her, and it was the kind of thing that, the whole event just gave me nothing but smiles. The hotel, the hotels, we've got one that's going to be coming up across from the lake, I'm looking forward to the first concrete being poured sometime. And we've got one going down, and it's a shame we can't feel sad about that, but it has been a scar on this city for far too long, and everything we've done, and particularly city management, city management and staff have been absolutely critical to getting that done. And without them, we wouldn't be where we are, we wouldn't have the progress we have, and we should all be forever thankful, because this could have gone on for a long time. And we should all be forever thankful because this could have gone on for a long time. Difficult negotiation to get to the point where we had control of the property and could do what we want. Here we are. It's underway. I was commenting to, I think, City Manager earlier today. People are coming up to me who wouldn't ordinarily, are you the mayor of Marysville? And they thank me. Don't thank me, but they're just, what they're doing, expressing thanks to the city, that we are finally, that's getting done and the traffic's going to flow again. There's a lot to be happy about. Madam Clerk, do we have any city correspondence, council correspondence?
No, we do not.
Thank you, ma'am. Mr. City Manager?
Some of this has already been discussed. I'll just give a brief status on the hotel. They are moving right along in demolition. Based on my conversation with Mr. Moore this morning, they are on target to have the hotel demolished and absoluted by the end of December, so hopefully, excuse me, end of January.
Ooh, I was about to get excited.
Get everybody's hopes up. Possibly sooner, but right now it looks like they are on schedule to get it done end of January, as we had indicated in the past. A few events that are coming up, no, no open or no ribbon cuttings or ground breakings in December, the rest of December. We do have a few events after the beginning of the year. On January 8th, ribbon cutting for Express Postal Services, new business in town at 11:00 AM. On 11-14, or excuse me, 1-14, January 14 at 9:00 AM, the King's Accounting Firm on D Street is having an opening. And then in February, February 5th, Rich Coleman Insurance, new insurance company moving into town at 11:00 AM.
Pardon, pardon me, sir. Did, did I miss the, the opening of that new business on Ninth Street, the?
That happened a couple of days ago.
Oh, darn it. Oh, darn it. Friday?
Last Friday.
Last Friday.
Yeah. The other event that is coming up, Mr. Carazo reminded me of this, tomorrow, between 5:00 and 7:00, the MBA is having a social networking event at Palomas, I believe. Was it, was it at Palomas? And I would encourage any of our electeds to stop in there and chat with all the businesses that are attending that. Looks like they'll have Cousins Maine Lobster outside, their, their food truck and light refreshments will be served. Anyway, it'd be good if any of you council members could make that. That is from 5:00 to 7:00.
Excuse me, City Manager, that's Thursday.
Oh.
Thursday, yes. Thursday, 5:00.
Oh, I, I might be looking at an old one. This one says September 18th. Okay. We'll get an email out to everybody saying clarifying.
Can we get invites out on all those rather than we come to the meeting here and get six or eight of us total?
On the ribbon cuttings?
Yeah.
I will talk to the planning.
Yeah.
I'll make sure that.
On all the events like that.
Yeah, I'll make sure that they.
Set a calendar, add them out on, thank you.
All right.
Even I pay attention to those.
And that's all I have.
It's been an eventful day and again, apologies for the late start.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes, ma'am.
Jim, give an update on, about the bricks because that is the number one question of the day.
I, I am hearing that that's the number one question of the day. I hadn't had a chance to discuss it with the contractor and the abatement or the asbestos consulting firm as to whether those bricks can be made available and how we can ensure that they're free of asbestos contamination. I also did get an email from, I was copied on an email with the Feather River Air Quality Management District expressing some concerns about bricks being given away because he read that in our newspaper. Our, our newspaper may have jumped the gun on that. So the U.S. EPA is comfortable with us giving a limited quantity of bricks away as mementos once we've determined that they are cleaned and acceptable to give away. We are working through how we verify whether they're clean enough to give away. And the contractor has saved some and palletized some.
May I? Is there a cost associated with that?
We intend to give them away for free.
So cleaning them doesn't cost us anything?
That I don't know.
Okay, thank you.
It'll be made more clear at a later date. The next regular meeting has been, had been scheduled for January 7th, 2025. It will be recessed in the following, the actual, next regular, actual meeting of the council will be Tuesday, January 21st, 2025 at 6:00 PM. And I can promise you, promise you, there will be special meetings interlaced between now and then. We will be working. We will be working. We've got some tough problems we're working our way through. And thanks for attending and thank you, Valerie. Meeting's adjourned.
YubaSutter.live's local government live streams are presented by Plumas Lake Self-Storage in Plumas Lake, where lifelong local residents are helping other residents keep things safe, providing indoor storage units, outdoor RV and vehicle parking, moving supplies and Penske Truck Rentals. Details at plumaslakeselfstorage.com.
Hi, I'm Neil Goforth of Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties. Caring for elders or even yourself has challenges. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties can help you address today's issues and plan for tomorrow with in-home and specialized care for you or your family members. Call us at 530-749-8800. Comfort Keepers of Yuba, Sutter and Nevada Counties.
In Yuba County, there's a legendary diner.
Delicious. Oh, my gosh, thank you so much.
Where the parking lot tells a story. A story as simple as biscuits and gravy.
The food is good. The prices are wonderful. My dad has so many friends here that come here and it's, my dad and mom have known Mary Jane and, and her dad before Duke.
Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue, home of legendary chili, holiday pies and generations of local residents preparing tasty, hearty food for generations of local people. Join Mary Jane and her genial associates as they serve meals you'll come back for. Duke's Diner on Seventh Avenue, Olivehurst.
In Marysville, where roots run deep. McNally Appliances promises to keep. Love bets brands with a smile on its face. We service what we sell. It's a warm embrace. Competitive pricing you can't ignore. With every purchase, you'll love it more. From fridges to washers, all in a line. We install with care to make it shine. Major brands, trusted and true. McNally Appliances is here for you. Oh, Nally McNally, we're your first choice. In Marysville, we help you rejoice. We service what we sell, no need to stress. At McNally Appliances, we're simply the best. Our promise stands, we'll always be here. McNally Appliances, bringing your cheer.
McNally Appliances, 119 D Street, Marysville. There's more Christmas to come on YubaSutter.live. We're going all over Yuba Sutter, catching a number of Christmas celebrations in the act of happening. Friday at 5:00 PM, we'll have the Yuba City Christmas Tree Lighting and then zip out to Sutter for the 6:30 Sutter Parade of Lights. If you missed any of them, you can binge watch them for the first time or watch them again right here this Sunday night. 5:00 PM, the Marysville Christmas Tree Lighting and 73rd Marysville Christmas Parade Replay will list the winners. Then at 7:00 PM, the 55th Olivehurst Christmas Parade Replay, also with winners noted. At 8 o'clock, the Yuba City Downtown Christmas Tree Lighting and Sutter Parade of Lights Replay. Christmas events in Yuba Sutter this Sunday evening at 5:00, 7:00 and 8:00.
Merry Christmas, YubaSutter.live. In the heart of the valley, we rise so bright. Where the news flows freely in the morning light. YubaSutter.live, where truth comes alive. Every Tuesday's a journey, it's where we thrive. Watch it unfold. YubaSutter.live, in the heart of our home, be informed, be wise. YubaSutter.live. We capture it all. Policy debates hear the people's call. With YubaSutter.live, you'll never miss a beat. Special reports hit hard, shining a spotlight.
You're watching YubaSutter.live, Yuba Sutter's live streaming channel on Facebook and YouTube. Thanks for watching and Merry Christmas.